Good evening. I hope you're doing everybody a good weekend. I know it's full of little daughters. Everybody enjoy everything today. And we have the intention led by Councilwoman Elaine Rich.
With all hearts and minds clear, I just pray. Dear Lord, I come before you humbly thanking you for your great blessings you have bestowed upon our city of Darlington. We thank you for filling our hearts with the spirit of kindness and working together for the continued growth of our city. We thank you for the wonderful people of faith that are inspired to be a part of our vision, for moving our city forward. We pray, Father, that whenever we are faced with challenges, that you will always be in the midst, guiding us to a solution that is fair to all. Dear Lord, I pray for our mayor and council, that all of our decisions will be within your wills. We ask now for your blessings and safe coverage of all that are and will be affected by Hurricane Dorian. This Lord, I ask in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Now we have approval of minutes over six, 2019 council meeting. Did I get them over there?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes on August 6, 2019 council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned as second that we received the approval of minutes on August 6, council meeting. All in favor? Show of hands, one by one, please.
All right.
Starting with the seniors. Okay. Everybody. If you say yes or no, I can, I'll get you. And those hands, don't I suck?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, for number four, okay, Mr. Garland informed me that we are not voting on seven, eight tonight because the permission didn't come in. So we'll eliminate that. So now we get a motion to approve meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minute meeting agenda, the exception of the elimination of seven, eight unfinished business.
I second. And has the motion as second, that we approved the minutes of the section of unfinished business, seven, eight? All in favor? Say yes, start with the seniors.
Yes.
I know.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Yes. Okay, I'm five, I'm Dr. DDR A, Ms. Lisa Rock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you to everyone who came out for the DDR A's Bringing Downtown Alive concert series on Friday night. We had a great crowd show up for the bonding company and also to support the Darlington Cruisers Car Show. A special thank you to American Legion Post 13 for their support in July and August, and to the PDRTA for its contribution, shuttling race fans downtown during Friday's event. We had more than 30 people ride the shuttle from the campgrounds around the track to the event, as well as having some folks who just drove from the campgrounds to the event. The grand finale for the series will be our community karaoke party from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Thursday, September 26th. Darlington Lions Club list us with staffing, and it'll be your last chance to see the Darlington Cruisers Car Show again until their annual Father's Day weekend extravaganza at Joe's Grill. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join the DDR A as members. Members can give us a call, attend this email, and we'll feed through your news, employees' recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and other events with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our extensive email news alert system. Memberships are $150 for most businesses, $100 for civic groups, churches, and nonprofits, and $50 for individuals. You can download an application at buildupdarlington.org, buildupdarlington.org, where you can also sign up for the news alerts to go directly to your phone or to your email. The next monthly Members' Breakfast will be 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, September 25th, at Toppey's Diner. This is free for members and $5 for all others. It's a great time to share your news with other businesses and find new connections. Other dates for your calendar include Thursday, October 31st, for Scare on the Square, our downtown trick-or-treating event, where we block the square and kids go from business to business, and also around the square at various tables that different businesses or churches or organizations who aren't located on the square can come set up a table and hand out items as well. And also for your calendar, Thursday, November 21st, is the Shop Small Downtown Open House on the Public Square. We'll have Santa, a DJ, Snow, and more. Any questions?
When I tell them Thursday first, what's the time?
It is 4:30 to 6:00.
4:30 to 6:00.
Kind of a little bit early, so it's a little alternative for folks that maybe don't want their kids just...
Out at night.
And we do block the square and the street, so the kids, you know, it's a safe environment.
Another question? Thank you. We're the Dr. Chamber of Commerce, out of the West.
Madam Mayor and Madam Council, Harriet is currently evacuating family members out of blood country, so she cannot be here tonight. Mr. Briggs, our chairman, wanted me to convey this information to you. Freedom Fest was a good success this year. We had an estimated turnout of over 20,000. We also made 20,000 towards our operating costs for the upcoming fiscal year. Sponsors included PD Food Service, McCloud Health, Patriot Automotive, Duke Energy, Care South, SBC, Wilson Senior Care, and Kinghorn Insurance. The chamber's planning retreat is scheduled for September the 11th, and we'll be electing new officers and setting the date for future events. So if there's anything y'all would like to see added or changed to our calendar year, please let one of our members know. The toast of Darlington is tentatively planned for Thursday, October the 24th. However, the chamber meets on Wednesday, September 11th, and we will be finalizing the date at that time, and we'll get back with you. Mr. Briggs, the chairman of the chamber, would like to extend his thanks to the city and Mr. Garland with regards to our building. The building has now been cleaned of mold, and we look forward to returning to downtown. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Number six, Susan, which is to speak. I have Mr. George Chase, Drains, blow down.
I came to approach the storm drains water system from another angle. I personally, you know, that my neighbor across the street would join me in this and giving a special thanks to Alex for working on the storm drains. You know, we've been, every time I have a hard rain, the lady across the street, Cindy, her house was flooded underneath. She couldn't run ductwork under the house. We had to put in a special heating system, which cost three times what ductwork system did. She had to do that, and when we had a bad enough rain, it would flood underneath my house. Well, Alex has not completed the project, but he is showing us some light at the end of the tunnel, and I think he deserves some credit because he's working hard at it. And another man who I don't think gets enough credit is a man that runs that new machine that we have for cleaning out the storm drains. Every time he comes out there, I go out and talk with him. He is very polite gentleman, and he is unusual in the fact that he cares about the piece of machinery that he runs. He gets upset if he doesn't get to do his inspections and maintenance when he's supposed to. He's a rare man, y'all need to be careful. And that's, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, unfinished business. Second reading of orders 2019-19, fire department cost recovery orders. You talked about that last month, about the fire department getting some funding for the cost recovery. So we don't have more on that now? We were discussing the thing outside. It's a second reading. We did the first reading last, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance 2019-19, the fire department cost recovery ordinance.
I'll second. It's been properly motioned as second, then we received the second reading of the orders 2019-19, fire department cost recovery orders. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That's over, Mr. ... Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to see the second reading of the orders 2019-20, false alarm orders and prevention. You talked about last week, about the businesses, they're having false alarms. So you want to, anybody want to discuss that again, or you all right with it?
I'd like to add one thing. If you look right under the different penalties for the different amount of alarms that have been triggered, we have the failure to respond to notifying public state, excuse me, failure to respond to the notifying public safety official within 30 minutes will get a $100 charge, regardless of the number of alarm activations. Can we publicize that a little more? I'm sure we have with the meeting agenda and all. But publicize it, but also add an actual phone number and contact person? Otherwise, I don't know who the caller is and if I know the law.
Everybody agree with that? With the adding of that?
So adding of the phone number and a contact person?
Yeah. No, that's fine. We'll make that motion additional.
I'd like to amend the second reading of the ordinance for 2019-20, false alarm ordinance and prevention. Under the false alarm number of offenses, we'd like to add the sentence of, "Who to contact and the phone number," and that's just to call the failure to respond to notifying public official within 30 minutes.
I'll second. Okay, Dr. Williams, second, that we received the second reading of the order 2019, false alarm orders and prevention, was it a meeting, getting a telephone number, and also 30 minutes? All in favor for that? Did you hear that? Aye? Aye. 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 The first reading of 2019-21, outdoor lighting orders, Ms. Lisa Rock.
Yes, Council, you have a complete copy of all the new proposed ordinance that the planning commission approved. You also have a letter, which I'm going to read for everyone, from the planning commission. During the last 12 months, the City of Darlington Planning Commission has researched and developed an updated city lighting ordinance to address new technologies. This proposed ordinance update would add more specific definitions and make it clear for businesses coming to town what is required. It also gives businesses a resource as they renovate or upgrade LED lighting fixtures on the exterior of their properties. This also provides codes enforcement with a solid tool to keep up with changing technologies. These rules apply only to commercial properties, not residential, and there is no added cost to the city to adopt them since the old-style incandescent bulbs and fixtures are disappearing from the original place. We ask that you support this proposed ordinance update to provide business a clear picture of what is required and to provide codes enforcement concrete information to give businesses. This change also improves nighttime security and public safety and discourages energy waste while reducing glare and light trespass onto other properties. Thank you for your consideration of our proposal, City of Darlington Planning Commission. As they noted, they worked on it for more than a year, probably. Basically, just our original ordinance was about two pages. This expands the lighting classifications and a lot of the definitions to include the advances in technology over the last 10 years or so. That way, when codes enforcement and the building inspector meet with folks, they can be more specific with them, and everybody can know what is required.
Okay, with this being the package, well, because it comes down to...
It should be.
Codes enforcement staff agrees with this ordinance proposal. Out of curiosity, as far as the city buildings are concerned, would we be in compliance or out of compliance, or partly in and partly out?
I'm not real sure what all fixtures are. That would be a codes enforcement question. But I'm sure as we update, we would want to update that.
At this point, we're partly in and partly out.
Yeah.
But we can, we can...
This is all we need to deal with exterior light.
Exterior light, not inside.
Not inside.
So, one of my questions is, the 2700 Kelvin, I believe that's a rating of how bright, or excuse me, how white the light is? So the lower the number, the more yellow, the higher the number, the more white, and then blue? Can I recognize these? I think you have the, whoever wants to answer this, I guess?
We'll just find out.
The 2700 Kelvin, still a quite light, but a lot of the blue is been removed. And sometimes you might hear somebody say, "Well, we can't see colors with 2700." But if you remember, incandescent bulbs, say we used to light a home with the ceiling fixtures, or lamps, or makeup mirrors, or ladies of bathrooms, incandescent bulbs at 2700 Kelvin. When you turn them on at night, do you see the color of the rugs, walls, clothes you're wearing, the color of your furniture? Yeah. It's just going to be slightly brighter because it's LEDs, but you still see color. We're just going to feel how much blue is going to make it worse for the glare and all. We're cutting out on the glare part of it.
Makes sense.
Still got the color rendition.
My next question is, number seven, off-site light trespass in commercial areas, light projected onto other commercial properties should not exceed one-foot candle. How do we actually measure that?
They have them, when they submit a plan, like Walmart submits their packet, their site plan, there is a page in there that shows where the light and how much light is going to be extended beyond and on their property.
And then how do we actually follow up?
Well, as a matter of fact, the section on site plan applications, where they send in the plans showing all the fixtures they have, and the types they're going to use, have the catalog. One thing they haven't been doing, Mr. Danny, they haven't been sending in what they need to send. And that's definitely part of written by a retired lighting engineer, spent his entire career lighting of parking lots, buildings, designing low-impact lighting, fully shielded stuff, so I got him the right idea. And what it's going to do is, when Mr. Danny gets his plans, it's going to have all the locations of where the fixtures go, the catalog cut show what it looks like, and the photometric report, which shows which direction the light is going. If it goes this way, they can't use it because it spreads out below horizontal as they're good to go. Everything's going to be controlled, but he hasn't been having...
So currently, in the...
She may not be able to talk to him.
I'm sorry, I understand as far as a new building, more interested in, like if you go on, and this will be a follow-up question, with the grandfather, and we have a, number two, there's some things that the city can deem to be a nuisance, a glare to create safety, and those people would have to comply with the regulations within 60 days. How would we measure if those people are going to be complying with it? I guess it's my real question.
Well, I think what we're addressing mainly with this is, okay, when you are going to outfit your building and not do a new building, if that was your question. So, when they come to pull their permit, they will have this available to say, "Here's what you need to show us." Exactly. Right now, our ordinance is not as specific, it's a little more vague, so that's why Mr. Danny's not getting the information he needs from those contractors to enforce our lighting ordinance as it was intended.
To go on with whatever Brian is asking, right now, this ordinance, if any, whatever the lighting is not whatever, and they are in compliance with what we have now, because we're changing or upgrading our ordinance, then they would have to begin to upgrade. They can't just remain like they are.
They would be fine as they are. As, the thing is, most of these people that have the incandescent lights, as those bulbs and those fixtures start to break, and they have to be replaced, we want them to be replaced with the right kind of thing, and that's what we're really addressing. So when business A has their lighting that goes on their parking lot, and it's the old style fixtures, we're not going to come and say, "You need to change this right now." We're going to say, "When you go to upgrade it, you need to follow these rules. That way, we don't have the light trespass and the nuisance to the neighboring properties."
Okay. Now, okay, this is, let me try and do, and what I, I'm saying layman's term, a beach light at Walmart that tells me, where I can see, that's a Walmart out there, but we said off-site affecting another business, if, like, what, Walgreens?
So, we're talking about...
Their light, you know, so I could understand.
The house across the street from Walmart. The parking lot lights in Walmart's parking lot doesn't need to be lighting up the neighbors'
Gotcha.
Or front yard.
Gotcha.
Or backyard, depending on where the house is located.
I completely agree.
And that's just, this is just a mechanism to put terms in to be specific, because unfortunately, you have to be specific, otherwise you create loopholes.
Councilor Backes? So, something is up, and clearly understand what you're saying. Anybody new coming in would have to follow their ordinance. Anybody who's prior is fine until they have to do an upgrade.
Yeah, until they start pulling permits and have them to change their fixtures.
That's technically not correct, though, because in 6-69, grandfathering, dash, section two, it says, "Any grandfather fixture deemed by the city to cause nuisance glare or create a hazard, i.e. discomfort or disability glare, shall be made to comply with these regulations within 60 days."
Is in reality of...
So my question, I understand...
What page are you on, Mr. Gop? What page are you on?
I don't have a page, but a 6-69.
Fourth page, Mayor, it's the very bottom, the fourth page.
And then the page before is seven, which is the off-site lighting trespass. I'm understanding if the new person's coming with a new light fixture, that they'll have to bring it to Alex, and they'll have to comply and say that they're getting this certain light fixture, it's going to comply to all these ordinances. My concern is, is if Alex gets a call from citizen A who says, "My house is being polluted by this light," how does Alex then go in and say, "There is a one-foot candle, that something is exceeding the commercial area light projected onto their commercial property, shall not exceed one foot." So there's exceeding about 1.5. This is just a little, very specific, and I'm just not sure we have the utilities to...
The main thing's going to be that your light is not lighting up someone else's property. What we've got when you start talking about grandfathering, is a lot of times what you have is people, they don't pull permits. This fixture goes out, so they just go buy an LED fixture, and they put it up. It's not shielded like it's supposed to, but with the new ordinance, then that'll give us a little bit more to be able to say, "Hey, this is the problem." With the ordinance that we have now, like I said, it's very vague, and it's hard to really enforce some of this stuff. Like I said, they go and replace fixtures, they think that, you know, "I'm replacing one fixture, I don't need to pull a permit yet." You know, and if you look at the ordinance, if it's less than $200, necessarily they don't have to have a permit yet. But with the new lighting ordinance, it would give me, if we started getting complaints, then I could go talk to them and say, "Hey, this is what we got, and this is what you need to do." But it's just pertaining to commercial, not residential.
I may be confused, but how are you going to project and authenticate a year-end that is not exceeding one foot? Is that clear?
That would be from the manufacturer's information of the product, probably. If you can't, if it's not clearly obvious, and I think most of these cases are going to be clearly obvious.
Like I said, if it's not shining in the roadway, or not shining on somebody else's property, then I'm fine with it. But now, if it's lighting up the roadway or lighting up your neighbor's property, I'm not fine with that. That's what we're going to use this ordinance for.
Make sure it don't shine on Syracuse, because I can't handle that no more.
Well, this is commercial anyway, right?
This is just a commercial property, right?
It's not...
It's commercial. It's commercial only.
Which, I don't have to do, because this is only the first reading, but would it make sense under the 6.6-6.9 grandfather in subsection two, if it said, "Any grandfathered fixture deemed by the building inspector to cause nuisance," and then allow an appeal from Alex if they chose to do so to the planning commission, so that if somebody came in, they would at least say, "Well, Alex is mad with me, and this is wrong." They could at least got the planning commission or somebody to go sleep.
Well, currently, if anybody disagrees with a ruling from codes enforcement, they can make an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's already in existence in our...
But this just says the city, so it...
In case we change the structure, do we have a codes enforcement doing it? Is the person's title building inspector or codes enforcement officer? I think that's why we just put the city in.
Mr. Panell, let me explain about Mr. Panell. Mr. Panell has been sending us emails for a long time, right? He keeps up with the lighting. I'm allowing you to say something, Mr. Panell.
Yeah, I'm just going to tell the member of the council, because Mr. Senior already knows it, the middle ordinance impacts it 10 years before the LED revolution. This building does not handle LEDs. And on the planning commission, now from Genesis to putting their sign up, we heard from a lot of people, and they were mad, because they want these visual signs going up, and with the, this one handles the LED lights, and it says, "They got to be fully shielded, put light below horizontal, it won't be shining in your neighbor's window." And we got a lot of complaints just from the sign at Genesis off of Castle Street. So if this handles the LEDs in the section, it says, "Site plan application," when it calls the manufacturer catalog cuts, that is a photo of the actual fixture, whether it's the wall pack or on a pole, what it's going to look like. And there's a photometric report, which shows, tells you by number which way the light is going, from zero bulb to 180 above it. And if you go to 90, 80, they can't use it because LEDs are directional type, little teeny little thing, and it's a point source of light, not looking to the sun, just looking at one of them. And the ones that are on Spring Street, the likely, what's called LED array, is not really fully shielded, so you can be, you can turn in off of Castle and see the last LED on the pole going down to the park, 900 feet away. With rays written now, Alex would get a photo of an actual fixture that was going to be put in parking lots on the side of building, and he would know what was going to be put up. And if it wasn't put up, then they would then have lied to him, and he could tell them, you know, take them out and do the right thing. This fixes the LED problem. I wouldn't be enough if he come close, couldn't handle it alone.
Thank you, Mr. Panell. Ms. Rock, if you had things to say?
I think so.
Everybody on council, you ready to make the argument? Go on, the first, um, read.
Can we add the, change city from building inspector and can't appeal to the board of zoning within 60 days to the 6-69 grandfathering, dash, two?
That's already in existence in our current zoning ordinance that people can apply.
I'm trying to just make it good for the layman. Is that fair?
There's going to be the new ordinance that they receive, right? So they would know that if it's not in the new.
Well, it's in the actual zoning ordinance, it's not in the specific lighting ordinance. Any issue that you have with a ruling of the building official, any appeal to that goes to the board of zoning appeals.
And, and you got something to say?
No, no.
I was, I kind of was asking a question, so we're not going to include it, and it'll just be within the prerogative of the building inspector to inform the citizen if they have an issue?
If they haven't, I mean, anytime they have an issue, I'll tell them that they can appeal to the Board of Zoning. I mean, if I only add it, it doesn't bother me, but I mean, I would have to inform them if there is an issue.
I got no more objections.
Okay, somebody want to do the first, um, with their motion? I'll make the motion that we accept the first reading ordinance, 2019-21, that's outdoor lighting ordinance.
Second.
It's been properly motioned as second, then we received the first reading of the orders, 2019-21, outdoor lighting ordinance. All in favor? Let it be known by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody? Okay, aye. First reading on order 2019-22, property donation, 165-10-03. Um, first reading on all 2019 22, property donation, 165-10-03. Oh, 0, um, 57, Chalice Street Extension.
Madam Mayor, um, I had a caller late last week that said she wanted to donate some property to the city. It is contiguous with Andy's pool, and will be of great benefit to the city to accept it if we can find, if we get a clear title on it. We haven't done our title research yet.
Tell it to Andy, is it?
I believe it's, it's less than a quarter of an acre. But it's one of the five parts that we're looking at.
The one in the pot, we was already looking at. So it's hers or people contiguous with the pool, it's the first, not the first property.
I believe it's, uh, a fourth of five parts. But we could not get clear titles of the others.
Right, on the other ones, so. Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the first reading ordinance, 2019 dash 22, property donation, 165-10-03, that's 057, Chalice Street Extension.
I have seconded a motion. It's the property motion is second, we receive the first reading, the order 2019 dash 22, property donation, 165-10-03, that's 057, Chalice Street Extension, all in favor? Looking to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, everybody agree, okay? Um, the second reading orders, 2018 dash 16, regulations dash the small wireless facilities. Mr. Gahd?
Madam Mayor and Council, we had two first readings on this last year, so we need a second reading. AT&amp;T has called twice this year, and they called again this morning, seventy-three times. They want to put in some small wireless facilities in our area. If you travel around Durham, you know we have better cell reception in some areas than others, so this will be of great benefit to us. If you look, again, just to remind you from last year, on page eight, there is an application and fee involved for $100 for each small wireless facility. And if it's a consolidated application, it's $100 each for the first five small wireless facilities, $50 for each additional small wireless facility up to the maximum of twenty. And other fees that would come to the city of Durham are on page fifteen, the rate. The rate to place a small wireless facility on a city-owned pole and covered area should be $100 per year for wooden pole, or $250 per year for all of the city-owned poles. Now, note this, we don't own that many poles. Most of that money would go to Duke Energy, or if it's over near the high school, that would be, um, a fee to electric. But we, if we do happen to own any poles in the future, this covers. This is a model ordinance with Municipal Association of South Carolina. We did ask that we change some of the fee structure last year, which we did, we increased the fees for the poles, I believe it was fifty and 150 dollars, so we went to hundreds for the wooden poles, and 250 for all other city-owned poles. We do recommend as we pass, because AT&amp;T and Verizon will be building small wireless facilities in our town, and rather than do that under our regulations, and just to come in with something we don't have, it's something we would not have in regulation at all.
Any other questions on that, before we vote? Okay, can I hear a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve second reading of ordinance, 2018 dash 16, regulations of small wireless facilities.
I'll second that.
It's the property motion that we receive, um, receive the second reading of order 2018 dash 16, regulation, small wireless facilities, all in favor? Looking to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um, number G, um, Chalice Street Beautification Project Councilwoman Elaine Reed.
Thank you, um, Mayor and Council. It has, um, we're doing great things at War Two, and when we completed the, um, the stormwater project there, when we started, it all started with the, um, the smell of the, the oil mill and that kind of thing, that kinda led into, um, to us moving to a way to kind of resolve it. And one of the things, or one of the biggest things that the residents in that area was to talk about the ditch that was stocked up. And as a result of the project, that was one of the areas that we were able to, um, lay pipes and, and cover up. I mean, that was a big part of the project. It wasn't a, uh, it was a big part for the, for the residents. The biggest part, of course, was, was being able to address our stormwater project, I mean, uh, problem in that area. I'm saying that to say that the area that, um, where the ditch has been covered up, and now has left a nice, I mean, a big open space there, and our beautiful Miss Rhonda Brown was able to bring this to our attention, because she was aware of the kinds of things that we wanna do in our, um, in the ward, and bringing people, the residents, more attention to upkeep of their property, and trying to do things, um, that they can to make things, um, much better, keeping them up, upkeep, and cleaning off the lots and things of that. So with her knowing that in mind, she, she, um, realized that this was city property, and it was a big old thing for her to do her thing to make it, uh, look really well and be an, uh, asset, uh, uh, not an eyesore to the area. So she talked with, um, Councilman Bryant Gahd, and then they called Councilwoman Elaine Reed, and we just had a great time out there, seeing what we could do with that area. So I'm giving a lot of, um, thanking Rhonda. So this is what we wanna do, is make it a, a, a greenery area, just, just make it, um, beautiful, just make it, um, pleasant to look at, not a park, per se, just, um, a thing that would upgrade the, the neighborhood, without just leaving an open space with, where they have just covered, covered up a ditch. And she has plans for that, and that's why we're calling, you know, beautification project, and I would like the support of the Mayor and, and Council for us to be able to do that. I am, mostly, the residents in the area are just all for it. They're all trying to do different kinds of things, that's just one of the things that will be done with the city's help.
Councilwoman Reed, the only thing that I would say about this, um, that trail sitting up there, gotta try to get that trail out first, before you put in the flowers up there. It's ugly. Flowers are beautiful, would be beautiful, but that trail sitting up there would take away from the flowers.
Well, I, well, one of... Well, our Councilman Bryant Gahd said that he could use that, so we're looking at that being removed very, very soon.
I got no interest in using that trailer, but I don't think it'd be a problem getting that trailer off the property. I think Bryant does interest, and I applaud her for noticing a piece of property, just open up a green space for the city and, uh, put some grass there, maybe add a bench or two, or transfer the benches that we had planned on putting outside the pool, and maybe put them there on that property, just to open up other green space, the city property to the public.
Right, well, there, most of the neighbors in the, most of the residents in the area, because they're seniors, they were not, um, about benches so much, so they were looking at, um, so with that in mind, I'm saying I wanted them to be involved, their input, whatever they, they want, as long as I had the, um, our beautification person there. And the, and the main thing was to make it, uh, look better, not so much for them. Well, it has just, the majority of the folk that's been contacted had said they would prefer no benches, and that goes along with us, but that's less expensive.
Do we wanna put any grass there?
Oh, yeah.
Do we wanna prove any funds for grass seed, or...
See, I didn't know what was leaving from us.
Bring us a plan.
Okay, that sounds good, 'cause she doesn't...
Put it down, please, put it down.
I just wanted, wanted to break, to tell you what it is, and I was hoping, I didn't, weren't able to talk with Bryant today, because she had really kinda drawn it up.
Councilwoman Reed, it's, you had something to say?
I was just asking, Ms. Reed, if she and Ms. Bryant would get a plan together with some figures to it, so the council would really know what they were acting on.
What, you mean, you just don't wanna give me a blanket chat?
Anybody else?
No.
Anybody else got anything to say? Okay, we're taking the information until you bring the information back.
All right, thank you so much.
New business, um, 2017 dash 2018, the order presentation, Mr. Bear Handoff, come on down.
All right.
Yes.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Yes, let's see.
Member of the council, first off, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to be of service to the city, doing our time here, and, uh, it's been a very pleasant engagement. All of you should have a beige binder in front of you, a little, uh, not a spiral, but anyway, this is a bound audit report that we delivered, and you should each have a copy. I'm gonna bounce around a little bit, because I gotta hit some areas that are important, and then I'm gonna drill down to things that are less important, and I'll be able to take any questions, and if you folks have, um, uh, interrupt me if you like, but, um, I'm due better keeping my train of thought on the tracks if we wait till then, but it's up the offer. The first and most important thing that the city needs from an audit every year is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion that you receive, that's on page two. You look at the paragraph, uh, as a result of our works, we feel like that our financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial statements are fairly stated, and we didn't find any issues with the presentation. All right, told you I was gonna bounce around, so I'm gonna bounce around now to page forty-four and forty-five. And while you're getting there, I'll tell you, this is the letter where we give an opinion on, um, matters of compliance with laws, regulations, agreements, and contracts, and it's also our comments on your internal control system and how we feel like it's functioning. It's forty-four, forty-five, probably the last two pages in your, in your binder, all right? On page forty-four, we talk about your internal controls first. I'd like to say that our tests and procedures were not specifically designed to test your internal control. We gained an understanding of them, we tested parts of them, and we extrapolated those results to the overall financial framework that you folks had. We didn't find any instances where you had a material weakness or a significant deficiency in your internal controls. That's not to say that you're perfect. We just didn't find any glaring errors in your operational procedures. Probably the most important, um, item that the city has is forward to what I call headline risk, is are you, you know, are you in compliance? Well, in compliance with what? You folks gotta be in compliance with a lot of things, all right? First of all, um, and what we get you, the headline, what we get you in newspapers, if you run afoul of sending your police fine money into the state like you're supposed to. On that, you report that the period that we audited, all twelve period, all twelve months, the amounts that were due to the state were sent in in the correct, were sent in on time and in the correct amount, right? What else do y'all want in compliance for? Well, y'all withhold retirement monies from all your employees, and then you match them, and you have to send them into the retirement system. On that, you report, again, we didn't find any issues where y'all ran afoul of timeline or procedures required to do that. Next, um, you folks have to make payroll tax deposits every time you run payroll, and those payroll tax deposits have to be made on time, and they have to be calculated right, and they have to get there when they're supposed to. We didn't find any instances where you dropped the ball on that either. So, again, we're not, we weren't here to play a game of gotcha with your finance staff, but in the course of our testing and analytical procedures that we've, um, performed, we didn't find any errors that came to our attention in those respects. Jumping around again, I could draw your attention to page four. While you're getting there, I'll tell you, this is your statement of net position, or to the non-governmental folks in business, this is your balance sheet. It's what you have, plus what you owe, and what you work, all right? You can see that this is broken down into two main categories, your governmental activities and your business type activities. And to make that easy for you, your business type activities are your water sewer operations and your stormwater operations. Everything else is government, okay? And we're gonna come back to that, I wanna keep a, a line divided between those two operations within the city, because it's important. They have to be measured separately, there are portions that are sometimes a little bit of translation is required to report on the results of those. So let's look at some results. Everybody wants to know how we did against the budget in the general fund, right? Let's turn to page ten. This is a statement of general fund revenues, expenditures, and changes in general fund balance, budget to actual for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. You can see you all had an original budget, you made at least one amendment to that budget, and then the third column under actual, those are what actually, that's what actually happened during the year. And so probably the most important figure on this page, and what everybody wants to know, is were we over or under for the year? You can see that from the third line from the bottom, we had a change in fund balance of positive 151,000 dollars. Was that good or is that bad? Is that a big number or is that a small number? Well, folks, your final budget was 6.7 million dollars, almost 6.8 million dollars, and you came within 151,000 dollars of breaking even, which is what, kinda what you're supposed to do, right? And that's not why you have a budget to begin with, right? To, to, to spend more than you take in, or vice versa. So that's how close you got. Well, let's look at some of the things that were different. Maybe we didn't expect, uh, variances that were out of line in that far right-hand column. You can see if it's a positive number, the results were more than we expected or more than we budgeted. If it's a negative number, it means that we didn't take in as much revenue, or we spent more than we had budgeted. I think some explanation is needed here, okay? If you look down the page in the expenditures section, in the second to the last line, is capital outlay. If you were to look at just that one line, you would think that you spent 241,000 dollars more than you were supposed to. Here where the explanation comes in. Let's go back up to about the fifth line down from the top on the revenue section. We got grant revenue at 627,000 dollars. What does that mean? Well, to an educated reader, that means that you didn't spend that extra 241,000 dollars until you got the 627 in grant money. Usually when grant money comes in, it is for capital outlay. If not for capital outlay, it's for other specific programs that it has to go towards, law enforcement, uh, FEMA money, those kind of things, all right? I just wanted to draw your attention to that, because at first glance, it might, it might look wrong, those are big numbers in parentheses, and they just need a little explanation, Moving on, let's go to page twelve. Page twelve is the quote-unquote income statement for your water sewer fund and your stormwater Stormwater fund's sort of standing on its own, but I wanna draw your attention to the water sewer fund. In the water sewer fund, we need to look at one number on this page, and that is loss before capital contributions and transfers, about two-thirds of the way down, and we're showing over 500,000 dollar loss in that fund. We have to add why, did anything happen out of the ordinary? Um, you know, what, what's going on? Well, recommendation to management is to have rate study done periodically, every three years, every five years. Number one, are we charging what we're suppo, are we charging what our peers charge recently? Okay? Other cities and towns have stated rates, are y'all's aligned with theirs? If you're already higher than theirs, and you're still losing money, why? If you're not as high as they are, and you're losing money, well, you might wanna consider mirroring some of their rates, okay? But another measure that the folks in the financial business like to do, and when I say folks in the financial, I'm talking about your folks that loan you money, your bondholders, the banks, the people that provide capital leases for you to acquire home equipment and so forth. They look at this and they measure your health. And one of the measures of health is how many days of cash do you have on hand, all right? If all operations were stopped, no more money would come in, how many days could we last with the cash that we have in the bank right now, all right? That calculation for this, for this fund is about 193 days, all right? Well, so that's, that's great, we got more than six months worth of cash in the bank. What do we got to worry about? Well, what happens if you lose 500,000 dollars again next year? Call it. For rate study, if you haven't had one done, that's something that I recommend that the city considers. Are we talking about number of days of cash on hand? That was the water sewer fund, what's it like in the general fund? what's it like in the general fund? Well, if we budget to spend six point eight million dollars, and on the balance sheet in the general fund, you have about two point three million in unrestricted cash, you have about a hundred twenty-five days of cash on hand in the general fund. What's all this with the days of, day, the number of days cash on hand you have? What, is it good or bad that we have a hundred ninety-three in the water sewer fund, we only have a hundred twenty-five in the general fund? Rule of thumb, Governmental Financial Officers Association recommends you have a hundred eighty to two hundred seventy days of cash on hand. And some of you are saying, that's a lot of cash, that's a lot of money. You only have nine months of cash on hand in my bank account? Look, I don't have nine months of my family's household spending in my bank account. Well, the reason the GFOA recommends this is precisely what's thrown in the news right now, all right? When you have a natural disaster, you have something happen. Cities, counties, municipalities, special purpose districts, they're charged with getting things right. And if you folks have flood, or this hurricane hits, the city's gotta spend some money to get things back up and running like they were supposed to, right? If you've got your storm drained and they're clogged, you've gotta get it unclogged. If your sewer plant's underwater, you gotta get that thing drained off, reseeded, and start it up again, you gotta do it fast. That means you gotta pay people to do it. That's why you need to have the cash on hand. You may get reimbursed by the insurance company. Mister Gordon, you've been doing this a long time, how long does it take to get reimbursed once you, once you validate your claim? Okay? You still trying to get some money from the flood for two thousand and fifteen? Everybody else in the state is too, it's been four years, okay? So, um, what does that mean? Well, we have to exercise hurdles on what we, what our military is, all right? We can only go up so much on that per year, that's a state law, it's based on population growth and the Consumer Price Index, it's a weird formula. So, where we, where do we go to raise revenues? Well, I'll tell you this, it's a lot easier to restrict expenditures than it is to raise revenues, all right? So, I would just throw out there, caution, remain diligent, and, um, being restrictive in how you spend your resources. All right, two more things, and then I'm gonna let y'all have questions and ask anything else you'd like. Let's, let me take you all to page... Y'all do retirement first, or y'all wanna do bond and debt? Which is it?
Retirement.
Retirement, all right, my man. Let's go to page twenty-eight. City of Darlington is a participant in South Carolina Retirement System, both in the regular retirement system and the law enforcement part, the police officer retirement system. Page twenty-eight gives you the background, an active legislation about it, and stuff's great for, for reading about eleven forty-five at night, okay? Page twenty-nine tells you what your rates are that you have to pay. Why don't we talk about that? Well, those rates are increasing one percent a year, so what does that mean? You take one percent of the city's entire payroll and add that to what you paid in last year, and that's a, that's an added expense you have. You haven't given your employees a single raise, but you're still gonna have to put one percent more in the retirement system for them, all right? That's something that the legislature enacted in two thousand seventeen. And I'm sure everybody's heard about unfunded pension liabilities. We've got, we've got conflicting authority here. I've got Constitution of the State of South Carolina on one hand, and I've got accounting standards on the other, and I'm torn right down the middle, all right? Let's talk about the Constitution. Constitution of the State says that the state of South Carolina will not let the state retirement system go bankrupt. Will not do it, it is against the law. So, that to me says that the general fund of the state is the backstop of the pension system. Doesn't that sound about right to you? Well, this is how they backstop it. They say, when it starts to hurt, we're gonna make you, the employer, pay more in for the employees, and we're gonna use this, this statute to do it, okay? So, it sounds to me like the liability ought to be on the state's books, not yours, right? Wrong. Accounting standard, ma'am?
It really is messing me up.
Why am I messing you up?
Oh, no, not you.
Okay.
The system.
Oh, all right. So, accounting standard says that each participating agency member has to carry its fair share of the unfunded liability on its books. City of Darlington, if you'll go back to page four, and you look about two-thirds of the way down the page, the second biggest liability that the city has is its unfunded pension liability of seven point six million dollars. In other words, if you take all the employing, sponsoring employers in the system, the unfunded liability is about twenty-three billion with a B, seven point six of that is yours. What does that mean? Well, you could, even if you had the cash, they're not gonna let you pay it off, okay? We don't have seven point six million dollars, but if you did, they want you to pay it off. But it means that you're gonna have to report it. And as that liability goes up or down, depending on the rate of return that your system gets, that's how your balance sheet's gonna go, up or down, all right? So, back on page thirty-four, you can see that that seven point six million dollar liability is broken down between the regular system of four million dollars and the police officer system of three point six million dollars. This note took up seven pages in your audit report, it's got all kinds of information on there. You can read how it was enabling legislation, that you can read the actuarial tables, you can read the a, asset allocation that's maintained at the investment commission, you can read all about it. But what that means is if, it's, you're choosing a discount rate of seven point two-five percent, meaning that it's assuming that over time, your system is gonna get seven point two-five percent return on assets that it's holding, okay? Remember that. Because if that amount goes from seven point two-five down to six point two-five, you can see the numbers to the left of the current rate, and how they go up significantly, just by a one percent reduction on the rate of return. Likewise, you can see what happens if we actually get eight point two-five rather than seven point two-five, that liability number goes down. That's our money working for us. So, the harder the money works for us, the better we do. All right, further down on page thirty-four, we've got listed every debt that the city's got. Remember I told you we had a wall to break off your water sewer and your stormwater over here, and everything else is governmental? That's how we've got it presented, presented here. You can see everything in your governmental activities, your no payables, capital leases, your general obligation bonds, your revenue bonds, and compensated access, which is nothing more than vacation pay for people at the end of the year. And you can see in your business type activities, which again is just water sewer and storm, drainage, again, your notes payable, your capital leases, your revenue bonds, and then your compensated, compensated accesses. You can see in the far right-hand column what's due next year, just the principal portion of, of the city's debt next year, just the principal portion is nine hundred forty thousand dollars. There's, that's almost a billion bucks we're paying in debt service payments next year. On thirty-five, we start to list these obligations out individually, with the terms, the interest rates, the reasons that we borrowed the money. And then on pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight, and then continue on thirty-nine, you can see the amortization of those, starting in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, and then going all the way to the maturity of the debt interest. Those are the highlights that I had for you folks. I'll be happy to go into detail on any more of this stuff. I'd like to say that I'm glad we got the cities on track now with the State Treasurer's Office. We are scheduled to do the fieldwork for the two thousand and nineteen audit, the first two weeks of October, I plan on presenting that report to you in December, okay? Why is that important? Well, you folks haven't had all of that information to look back on in order to do your budget for the upcoming year, in several years. And I would like for when you do your fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, to have actual figures from fiscal year ending nineteen, so that you can at least look back on something that actually happened when you're making the decision on how allocate your resources and how estimate your revenues.
Couple of years, or last year when we had an update on this subject, um, they said that we weren't gonna get our audits called up for a number of years. So, you're telling me we'll potentially have it called up by next year?
Not potentially, you will, you will have it called up by the end of this calendar year.
Right now.
You see, you see, I I can't get fin, I can't get paid until I get finished. I like getting paid.
I'll write more.
You're not, you're not out of compliance with, um, the Treasurer's Office anymore, and then, um, by the end of this calendar year, hopefully your December meeting, I will present to you the, the fiscal year ending nineteen report. We've already got it scheduled, my staff's already harassing Ms. Pridgen. You, you will hear her complaint shortly, I'm sure, but, um, eighteen's over, nineteen's rolling.
All right. Thank you.
Captain, I know you're telling the truth, because folks have sent me a letter. I didn't get a living mail, about getting high.
You didn't?
I didn't get one, just like took it and put it in trash. Gets me on schedule.
I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Bill Hancock, his folks, the Brittingham Group. Compared to the last firm, breath of fresh air, they're professional, they don't make excuses, they answer your phone calls, they respond to your emails, and, and I know that , uh, Ms. Pridgen and Lacy and Cheryl may, you know, may, not like all requests, but they're much easier to work with. Thank, I wanna thank them for, for the quick way they responded to them. Because it's been our assertion all along that if Phil and Jordan hadn't put his, had put the ops in the ditch, we never would've been in this situation.
Appreciate this.
Yes, ma'am.
I know.
Any more questions? We need to accept the audit.
Down, okay. You gonna make that motion?
All right.
I'll make a motion, we accept the two thousand seventeen, two thousand one eighteen audit, that's gonna be presented by Mr. Hancock, on behalf of the Brittingham Group LLC.
All right.
You're going to water suck?
I'll say. Right, yeah, okay. It's been properly motioned, and we received a two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen audit presentation by Mrs. Bill Hancock, Brittingham Group. All in favor? Listen, listen, aye.
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 Aye. My hands, mostly.
Aye. In a ways? Motion carries. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you, folks, for allowing us to serve you, uh, real report coming back.
Okay, thank you. Glad to be called up, glad to be called up. Okay, number nine, received information, number four, any council committees? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, board's commission appointment, okay? You got four.
But he's a mayor and council. I come before you tonight for a board appointment for Board of Zoning Appeals. At this time, we currently have one seat available, and Mister Mike Sprott has expressed interest in filling that seat. Uh, Mister Mike Sprott is retired from the South Carolina Department of Transportation, lifelong, uh, lifetime resident of Darlington, uh, with engineering experience. He has a bachelor of science, um, in civil engineering from the Civil, forty years of engineering experience with DOT. And he served on the Darlington County Planning Commission from July of nineteen ninety-five to ninety-eight, and then again from two thousand and ten, July of two thousand and ten until nineteen, when his seat expired. But he would like to have the opportunity to, to, um, sit in that, sit on that board, and
What's going down?
That's Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning, okay.
I'd like to motion that we approve, um, Mike Sprott for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll say it. We brought the motion, so that we receive Mister Mike Sprott, the Zoning Appeals, call it all in favor. Listen, aye.
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 Pridgen.
Um, number nine now, received information, Department of Labor, actually, number ten, council committees?
I have one. At the last council meeting, um, mayor, there was a discussion about, um, comprehensive plan and, and things that we didn't follow up on, and I think a comment was made that we never had a discussion about this. Well, I've just given council a copy of our September twenty-fifth work session, where we did have a conversation of several things that we discussed, that we needed to follow up on, that we have not followed up on. And I am, um, bringing this list back to council attention on the several things on this list that we have addressed but didn't follow up on, that we need to follow up on to complete. This was September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, which is a year later, and these things have not been followed up on.
Did I get a copy?
No, but I have one for you.
Okay, okay, one for you.
I think there's an extra one down there. You want me to have it too?
Oh, yeah. One here.
Um, what part of, I didn't get, I didn't have it in my hand, what part are you talking about?
Well, if you go to the, just down at the bottom where we did the summary.
The summary.
You see where it starts with council, the millions, gave us summary of what we discussed.
Right.
And all these things were listed that we were gonna follow through on, follow up on, that we have not followed up on.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm trying to remember, what was that issue last council meeting?
That came up about, um, Nathan and the, and the, um, that stormwater master plan and all that was
Oh.
And it was saying we were gonna follow up on it, we didn't follow up on it.
Seems like we had Mister Garland ask us to give some opinions of some things that we thought needed to be done with the city, and then everybody discussed it, and I just, I'd made some notes, and I tried to do a summary
Did the summary go along with you?
Of what everybody else had had, so this isn't my input necessarily, it's just what everybody
It says you gave a summary.
Well, I did, but what I'm saying is I gave a summary of what council discussed, so I'm not saying everything that's one through six was necessarily my idea, but I was just categorizing what was, what was being thrown out at that work session.
The point is, we did, we need to follow up.
Right, okay, so that's it, okay. And evidently, whatever we was then, that we had discussed.
Just for another question, Mister Garland, um, is there a dress code for council meetings? I think we need to research that.
I can think of one about it.
Oh, just curious.
I think we have one for court.
Okay, just curious.
What kind of dress code would you like?
It's not, did it come in here?
Everyone come in.
Oh, my gosh. But we can discuss it.
I'll
I'll make a motion for the adjournment.
Um, I, I would like to thank, um, the City of Darlington, um,
Second that motion.
I'm not finished yet. I'm gonna get my comments now.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the City of Darlington for their help with Mayor Lumna, um, the weekend. As usual, everything went well, um, the sanitation department, the fire department, the police department, everything just fell right in line, we had no problems, and I wanna thank you. And also, um,
Southern Fire.
Miss, um, Southern Fire mother went great, I was out to the racetrack Sunday, um, the race was supposed to start at six o'clock, didn't start by ten because of the rain, but it was fascinating, you see the trucks going around the track, drying up the water, and then the race started about up to ten. And also, um, Miss, um, Backus, about the, um, cemetery cleanup. Um, there was an excellent job done, people came out, well, fifty people came out to help with the graveyard. It was, we had a good report, it was excellent. Uh, so one family donated hot dogs, Nathan's hot dogs, the best chili in the world, I think we the open restaurant. Everything went well, we had donations of water, and had donations of, um, everything out there. And so, we, this, 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 um, Backus, to let everybody know, when we had enough, everything went well, just wanna thank the city for all your effort and what you do. Now we can get on down to our adjournment. The members, okay, I'll throw the first, regular monthly meeting of Darlington City Council. Not gonna get that adjournment.
I'll make a motion that should And I'm most certain of a second.
We brought the motion, second, um, adjournment. We brought the votes, the second was, um, jury, all in favor, listen to the aye. Aye. Name. Aye. Thank you.